Worship, I can confirm it is just after 6:30, actually it's 6:30 exactly. The livestream has commenced and we are ready to start the meeting.
Good. Can I also point out that this meeting is being recorded? So to cover GDPR, we have to make that announcement. As the chairman, I would, I know we've just started. I would like to have a minute's silence from everyone. For Captain Tom and all of the people, the 121,000 people have died due to the pandemic. So if you could all be silent for one minute, please. Thank you all the councillors for your indulgence. I now hand over to Sammy.
Thank you, your worship. I can confirm that Sammy Winter will be your team's host for today. We have IT support if required and Christina Webb will be clerk in the meeting today. During the meeting, all participants except for the chairman will be muted, and this should remain during the whole of the meeting unless you have asked to speak. May I take this opportunity to remind members that you are invited to participate in the meeting, but would ask that you request to speak through the chat bar, which can be found on your taskbar. The chairman will be notified of your request and he will then invite you forward to speak. Once you have been called forward to speak, please could we ask you to unmute yourself and then once spoke, unmute yourself again. When asking a question, please could we ask members and officers to refer to page numbers where possible within the report or agenda. If we have to adjourn the meeting this evening, the chairman will advise of this and the anticipated length of adjournment. When voting on a report this evening, this will be undertaken by electronic voting where possible. Budget items for this evening, which are items 16 and 17, will require in line with the council's constitution, a recorded roll call vote. By confirming the minutes, noting the decision list and agreeing to exclude the public, unless any member raises an objection on these matters, these will be confirmed by assent. Members, if I can just complete a roll call of members present. Councillor Anderson.
Present.
Councillor Bensley.
Present.
Councillor Bird.
Present.
Councillor Borg.
Present.
Councillor Cameron.
Present.
Councillor Camden.
Present.
Councillor Graham Carpenter.
Present.
Councillor Penny Carpenter.
Present.
Councillor Cordina Akenback.
Present.
Councillor Fairhead.
Present.
Councillor Flaxman Taylor.
Present.
Councillor Freeman.
Present.
Councillor Gayler.
Present.
Councillor Grant.
Present.
Councillor Haken.
Present.
Councillor John Hammond.
Present.
Councillor Paul Hammond.
Present.
Councillor Gill.
Present.
Councillor Lawne.
Present.
Councillor Martin.
Present.
Councillor Mogford.
Present.
Chairman, your worship, we have apologies from Councillor Myers this evening. Councillor Plant.
Present.
Councillor Robinson Payne.
Present.
Councillor Scott Greenard.
Present.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
Councillor Smith Clare.
Present.
Councillor Stenhouse. Councillor Talbot.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Wainwright.
Present.
Councillor Brian Mocker.
Present.
Councillor Colleen Mocker.
Present.
Councillor Waters Dun.
Present.
Councillor Wells.
Present.
Councillor Williamson.
Present.
Councillor Bee Wright.
Present.
Councillor Tony Wright.
Present.
And do we have Councillor Stenhouse?
Present.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Officers, we have in the meeting this evening, your worship, we have Sheila Oxtaby, Chief Executive Officer, Karen Sly, Finance Director, Paula Boyce, Strategic Director, Caroline Watling, Monitoring Officer, Sarah Tate, Head of Organisational Development, Nicola Turner, Director of Housing, myself, Sammy Winter, Corporate Services Manager, and Christina Webb, Corporate Services Officer. Thank you, your worship. We can now move on to the agenda items.
Right, move to item two. Any decorations of interest, please? None. Move on to item three. Items urgent business. I have not been notified of any items of urgent business. Item four, Mayor's announcements. I don't have any, thank you. Move to item five, the minutes. The minutes of the council meeting held on the 26th of November 2020 are attached on pages five to 10. Would any member like to speak on these minutes, please? I better have a proposal in a second, I first stand. Can I have a proposal in a second for the minutes?
We have Councillor Smith, chairman.
Good evening, your worship. I propose the minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second that, chairman.
Councillor Grant, chairman, thank you.
Anybody wish to speak on the minutes?
Chairman, if we have no objections within the chat, which we haven't at the moment, those minutes can be confirmed by assent. Thank you.
Right. There's any, nobody wants to speak on the minutes, right? As it's been said, we're con, by assent, right? Item six. Service committee decisions lists for the period of the 5th of November 2020 to the 9th of February 2021. The service committee decision list for the period of 5th of November 2020 to 9th of February 2021 is attached at pages 11 to 20. Just to remind members that decision list is here for information only. Does any member wish to speak to the decision list? Anyone? No.
Chairman, I have nothing in the chat bar. Thank you.
Yes, you. If a member wishes to raise any objections to the decision listed, they will be confirmed on assent. Thank you. Item seven. Outside body appointments. Water Resources East Limited. The report is attached at pages 21 to 38. The chairman of the environmental committee, Penny Carpenter, to present.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, members. On the 27th of January 2021, the Environment Committee agreed to recommend to full council that Great Yarmouth Borough Council become a member of the Water Resources East and that the appointed member should be the same as that which already sits on the Coastal Partnership East Body. The council is being encouraged to join the Water Resources East. It is a multi-stakeholder organisation which seeks to plan and safeguard water resources in the eastern region. Water Resources East is one of the five regional groups in England formed through DEFRA and the Environment Agency. A number of other councils in Norfolk are members. Kings Lynn, West Norfolk, Breckland, North Norfolk and the Broads. And they are all membership, members of this, and we will help the borough to work in a more joined-up way with other stakeholders when planning for the demands for water, especially for new housing developments and economic growth. So the recommendations, if I may read to council. If there are no questions, your worship.
Need a proposal.
I think Councillor Smith will propose.
Right, thank you.
A second, your worship. Councillor Grant.
Yeah, your worship, I'd like to propose councillor Penny Carpenter to be appointed to that board with councillor Bensley as her deputy in case she can't attend. One second, your worship.
Right. Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak? We need a vote. All those in favour?
Sorry, sorry, your worship. I keep pressing the button to put my hand up and I just would like to say, would you like to take the vote first? But I have a suggestion and a comment I would like to make on this issue.
I would suggest, I would suggest we have your suggestion and comment first.
Okay. Thank you. Just, just my comment. I, I support this, I do support this. But I would like, what I would like to see is that the, the person who takes up the post, which I think would be councillor Carpenter, that she put herself onto the Broad's IDB because they, they are connected. And I do think that all these water issues need to be connected because I raised this at the environment and I was really surprised that there don't seem to be any connection between any of these bodies. But they all link up and especially as the environment is, is taken more and more of an effect. The coast is coming in, the floods are coming inland, they're going to meet soon. And I think it, I personally think it's important that, that if councillor Carpenter has taken up the appointment, that maybe she should put herself onto the drainage board. Thank you. That's just my, my comment. Thank you.
Before we go to the vote, councillor Graham Plant would like to speak.
Thank you, your worship. Just following on from what councillor Marlene Fairhead just said. Across the county council, there is a new water agreement going on. Lord Danit is leading. It joins together all the IDBs, the Environment Agency, all the councils, the county council as a lead flood agency and DEFRA and, and everybody across the county. Because as councillor Fairhead has just said, we are being inundated not just from the sea but from inland as well. And we think it's time that the, all agencies worked hard together to make sure that the whole of Norfolk is protected. They've all got different responsibilities, they've all got different monies, different funds. So we're thinking probably a good idea to pull them all together and work together as, as one to make sure that everybody's talking from the same hymn sheet when it comes to flooding across the board. And the, the Broad's authority is included in that as well. I just thought I'd mention that, your worship.
You. Councillor Carl Smith, do you wish to say something?
No.
Thank you.
I just proposed it. Thank you, your worship. Graham's done that, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Now, can we take it to the vote? It's approved. Okay, right, we move on to item eight. Outside body appointments for Broadland Future Initiative. Report is attached at page 39 to 42. Leader to propose.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I propose here that councillor Penny Carpenter is elected to this forum and, and that, once again, that councillor James Bensley is her elected deputy. And so move, your worship.
Second, your worship.
It's been seconded by councillor Graham Plant. Do I have any wish to speak on this item? Now, all those in, oh no. Wait a minute, we're going to set the vote system off again.
Your worship, that is carried.
Thank you. Move on to item nine. Change in members' appointments. The report is attached on page 43 to 44. Leader to present. Councillor Smith.
Yes, thank you, your worship. This is a change which was recommended, I believe, through the Constitutional Working Group, that, that council appoints the vice chair of the Environment Committee, which is councillor James Bensley, to the GYBS liaison board, and the chair of the Environment Committee, which is councillor Penny Carpenter, to the GYBS company board. So it's just a change of roles there. And I shall move the report.
Second, your worship. Second, your worship.
Thank you. Sorry, what?
Thank you, worship. That is approved.
Item 10. Revision of the list of statutory proper officers. The report is attached at pages 45 to 46. The leader to present.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Local government legislation requires local authorities to appoint proper officers. This term is generally used to refer to those officers who alongside their day-to-day roles have specific responsibilities set out in legislation. Proper officers are appointed to acting capacities specified across a range of statutes and are generally at senior leadership level within the organisation. For example, the resignation of a councillor is required to be submitted in writing to the proper officer under section 84 of the Local Government Act 1972. The current definition of a proper officer in the constitution is wider than is necessary, and this leads to a lack of clarity and certainty around certain statutory responsibilities within the authority. This report recommends that the number of proper officers are reduced to the three, which are the chief executive, the finance director or 151 officer, and the monitoring officer. Your worship and members, the recommendations are on page 45 of tonight's agenda, and it is recommended that council note and approve the revision to the list of statutory proper officers and give delegated authority to the council's monitoring officer to make any consequential revisions to the constitution. And I shall move the report, your worship.
It moves. Seconda.
Second, your worship.
Councillor Plant, thank you. Right. Item 11.
It's been counted this time, your worship. Yeah.
Good. Right.
Thank you. That is carried, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to item 11. Contract standing orders. The report is attached at page 47 to 52. The leader to present.
Thank you, worship. Your members, this report asks members to approve revisions to the contract standing orders, which are incorporated as articles 34 to 37 of the council's constitution. More complete revision of these standard orders has been contemplated, but in December 2020, the government published a green paper entitled Transforming Public Procurement with the aim of speeding up and simplifying procurement processes. This will lead to revisions to the procurement legislations which will take into account exit from the EU. Accordingly, full revision of the contract standing orders will await that legislative change. The revisions proposed to members tonight relate primarily to the procurement authority thresholds, which establish the minimum procedures necessary for contracts according to their financial value. The thresholds have been updated so that the limit for progressing via a single quotation has increased from 10,000 to 25,000. You will see, members, that has been increased from the original report you got and you should have been notified, it was 20. But members of the Constitutional Working Group have been informed of that rise to 25,000. Additionally, the grounds for relying on a waiver from standing orders have been broadened to provide for a wider range of options when there is generally likely to be new relevant competition within the market for a specific purchase of goods, supplies or services. The reason for the change is to make the council more agile in its procurement process at lower value levels so that the process is more proportionate and responsive to the operational needs. The report asks members, and the recommendations are on page 47, that we approve the updated articles 34.10 and 36 as they appear within the body of the report and delegate authority to the monitoring officer to make any further consequential amendments to the constitution. And I shall move the report, your worship.
Can I have a second, please?
Second, your worship.
Councillor Plant. Anybody wish to speak to this? No, we'll move to the vote.
Your worship, that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item 12. We move on to item twelve. Acquisition and Disposal Policy. Report is attached at page fifty-three to one hundred and six. The leader to present. Carl.
Yes, thank you again, your worship. Members, this report asks members to adopt the revised acquisitions and disposal policy, which appears at appendix one of the report. A version showing track changes is also appended so that members can note individual revisions. Members are reminded that the policy was last updated on the twenty-third of April two thousand and nineteen. The revisions currently proposed here have the following effects. Clarifying the right-to-buy transactions and the use of retained right-to-buy receipts now fall under separate policy. Item two, increasing the threshold for disposals by officers, acting under delegated authority from fifty thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand for new leases and licenses, and from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand for freehold and leasehold land. These thresholds do not relate to Beacon Park where different limits apply. Strengthening oversight on disposals by officers by requiring that a strategic director is involved in certain disposal decisions. Clarifying the scheme of delegation for disposals. Item five, improving the gateway procedure for acquisition programme section eight. Eight. Item six, simplifying the financial consideration section reacquisitions, and seven, updating the procurement section post Brexit. This was, this report also asks that the monitoring officer be given delegated authority to make any consequential revisions to the constitution. And the recommendations are on page fifty-three, your worship and members, and it is recommended to council adopt the updated acquisitions and disposal policy at appendix one to this report and give the monitoring officer delegated authority to make any consequential revisions to the constitution. And like, once again, your worship, I move the report.
Can I have a second, please?
Second, your worship, I wish to speak as well.
Yes. But you're first in line, so you can speak now. Councillor Plant.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I just welcome this, this change in policy. It gives the officers a much clearer route of how we deal with our assets going forward. We have an awful lot of activity going on in the borough at the moment, and it gives the officers a more clarity on how they can move forward more swiftly and with a how can you put it, with a more entrepreneurial sense about them as well. So I welcome the report, your worship.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? No one else, move to the vote.
Thank you, your worship, that is approved, thank you.
It's approved. Good. That was approved. That was a policy statement, wasn't it? Item thirteen. Sorry, I got lost there. Pay Policy Statement. Report is attached on pages one hundred and seven to one hundred and fourteen. The leader to present.
Thanks again, your worship. Members, Pay Policy Statement two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. Section thirty-eight of the Localism Act two thousand and eleven requires the council to produce an annual pay policy statement for the start of each financial year. It is a legal requirement that full council formally sign off this statement, and the responsibility cannot be devolved to any other person or committee and must be approved by the end of March each year. The pay policy statement has therefore been updated for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two financial year, and the recommendations are on page one hundred and seven, members, and it is to adopt the pay policy statement for two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two and to publish on the council's website. And I so move the report, your worship.
It is moved, do I have a second? Been seconded by councillor Plant, sorry, councillor Graham Plant. Do you have anybody wish to speak to this? No. We move.
Thank you, your worship, that is carried.
Carried. Move on to item fourteen, Housing Revenue Account Budget Setting twenty twenty-one to stroke twenty twenty-two. This item was incorrectly added to the agenda and has been updated, and members have received a copy of this along with being submitted to the agenda pages on CMIS. Members, please refer to the updated document. The chairman of the Housing Committee, councillor Grant, will propose.
Thank you, your worship. The housing revenue account for twenty-one to twenty-two budget was considered by the Housing Neighbours Committee on the fourth of February and passed unanimously. The budget reflects the spending and income plans for twenty-one, twenty-two for the next four years in relation to the council housing stock of approximately five thousand seven hundred and sixty properties and three hundred and sixty leaseholder homes. The opening balance reserve for twenty twenty-one was nine point five million. The twenty-one to twenty-two opening reserve balance is forecast to be seven point eight, reflecting the deficit of one point seven million as a result of continued increased levels of capital investment into the housing stock. The housing revenue repair costs continue to be reduced as a result of increased investment in the stock in both the current and prior years. The housing revenue account continues to meet its right-to-buy retained receipts requirement with the affordable housing budget for twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, including an additional budget beyond the minimum expenditure required to support the delivery of thirty-six new additional council properties. In twenty-one, twenty-two, my apologies, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, an additional one and a half million was included over a four-year period to support an additional housing programme. The programme has now been rephased between twenty-one and twenty-two to twenty-four and twenty-five. This programme is to supply additional housing homes in addition to the one-four-one right-to-buy retained receipts of affordable housing programme, and capital expenditure on new H R A homes is funded by borrowings supported by revenue. Twenty twenty, twenty-one right-to-buy sales are reflecting a significant decline in comparison to prior, prior years. This appears to be the impact of the current Covid nineteen pandemic. The council sold seven homes to the end of quarter two with no completions in quarter three. In comparison, twenty-seven sales completed in twenty-one, nineteen, twenty, natural year. The deduction in sales will have a current year impact on capital receipts, and this will be monitored going forward. Therefore, I move the housing revenue account budget.
As we move, do I have a second?
Yes, I'd like to second that, your worship.
Sorry. Who's that?
Councillor Flexman-Taylor.
Ah, oh, sorry. I haven't got you. Yeah, right. Councillor Flexman-Taylor, do you wish to speak, councillor?
No, thank you, just to second that, thank you.
Thank you, right. Well, could you put your hand, chair, hand down, please? Right. Is there anybody wishes to speak to this? No one, we move to the vote.
Your worship, that is carried, thank you.
Carried. We move on to item fifteen, the Treasury Management Strategy Statement, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. The report is on pages one, two, five to one, four, two. The leader to present, is this a five-minute one?
No. I've just quit, it's too long, thank you. Thank you, your worship. Members, item fifteen, the Treasury Management Strategy twenty-one, twenty-two. Alongside the setting of the annual budget, the council is required to approve its Treasury Management Strategy for the forthcoming financial year. The strategy outlines the approach to the borrowing and investment activity and managing these in a prudent way that as regard to security and liquidity ahead of the highest rate of return. The treasury management function ensures that the council's cash is organised in accordance with the relevant professional codes that align to the strategy and that sufficient cash is available to meet the capital expenditure plans. The treasury strategy covers both the borrowing for the general fund and the housing revenue account, taken into account future borrowing requirements which are aligned to the approved capital programme for the council as presented within the budget reports. The strategy was recommended by the Policy and Resources Committee earlier this month and will be monitored during the year, with a half-year report being made to members later in the year. And members, the recommendations are on page one hundred and twenty-five, and they are, it is recommended that the policy, sorry, that the Treasury Management Strategy for two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, the annual investment strategy, section four, an operational boundary and authorised limits in appendix C, and I propose that those recommendations are approved.
Second, your worship.
Right. Seconded by councillor Graham Plant. Do you have anybody that wishes to speak on this item? Now, we'll move to the vote.
Your worship, that is carried, thank you.
That's carried. We now move to item sixteen, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, General Fund Budget Report. Can I say, I hope we're not here till half past three in the morning? Councilors are reminded that in line with the council's constitution, Council Procedure Rule thirty-one point fifteen point six, a recorded vote shall be taken on the setting of the budget. And could I point out that the leader of the council and the leader of the shadow will have five minutes. Anyone else who indicates or wishes to speak will have three minutes. I hand over to the leader of the council, Carl Smith.
Thank you very much, your worship. And can I, just before I start, I'd like to thank the one-five-one officer Karen Sly and all her team on delivering a budget in such unprecedented circumstances, and thank them all for the hard work in which they put into this during the past year. Members, the budget report presents for approval the general fund budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. The report includes the detail of the budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, along with the capital programme and forecast reserve statement for the same period. The budget reflects the one-year local government finance settlement for twenty-one, twenty-two, which was announced in December and confirmed earlier this month, and includes the funding that was announced in the settlement. The settlement included announcements of one-off funding for next year included a further seven hundred and forty-six thousand pounds to support the ongoing impact of Covid. The report covers the twenty twenty-one budget only and makes recommendations for the setting of the council tax for the borough's element, which is in line with the national assumptions of council tax increases, which amounts to a five-pound increase for a band D per annum and three pound thirty-three for a band A. When taken into account with the level of parish precepts for the borough, Great Yarmouth will continue to be the lowest for Norfolk and one of the lowest nationally. The council does continue to hold a number of earmarked reserves, which along with the general reserve, provide some financial stability whilst the transfer of them reserved should only be seen as a one-off source of funding. Use of reserves in this way can provide one-off upfront funding for projects and schemes that can deliver future savings and efficiencies. The budget as presented for recommendation has been set within the context of current pandemic, which has had and will continue to have an impact on the council's financial positions for the short to medium term. Despite these significant challenges, the budget continues to support the delivery of vital services to the residents and businesses within the borough, including waste and recycling, grounds maintenance, housing including support for the homelessness, essential support to households through local council tax support. During the last twelve months, we have seen the biggest challenge faced by local government since the Second World War due to Covid. It has affected and continues to affect all of our lives in many different ways. I am extremely proud of the way the council and its staff has responded and worked flexibly over the past twelve months, with our partners in not only maintaining and delivering the essential day-to-day services our residents rely on, but the critical roles many staff have played in multi-agency response to coronavirus over this period. Many have taken on extra duties in order to keep our residents safe, especially the most vulnerable, and help to support local businesses during these challenging and unprecedented times. Our priority work to assist the community has included running a community helpline, resident welfare checks, helping food banks, including delivery of food parcels, medicine delivery, administering government hardship funding, delivering supporting communication campaigns to aid public safety and wellbeing, and to signpost people to help if needed, assisting homeless people into suitable temporary accommodation, and just to put And just to put some figures on those members, the government provided funding of one point three million to assist residents with council tax payments for wider welfare support. So far, we have paid out eight hundred and ninety-five thousand pounds to residents and allocated thirty thousand pounds toward food banks. Any funding remaining at the end of March, we rolled forward to the use to offer funding support from April. Intestine trace self-isolation payments, which have been extended until thirty, the first of March this year. So far, we have paid out one hundred and fifty-one thousand pounds to residents needing to self-isolate. We are now launching our extended discretionary test and trace self-isolation payment scheme, along with other districts in Norfolk, with additional looking funding of two hundred and fifty thousand pounds due to be allocated to Great Yarmouth Borough Council. This scheme is expected to be in place throughout twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. We move on then to businesses, to support businesses and the local economy. Since November lockdown, we have paid out nearly eleven million pound in national and discretionary business grants schemes to businesses in the borough. This included a specific Christmas support grant for wet-led pubs, as well as a one-off closed business lockdown payment grant payable through the current lockdown period. Overall, since March last year, we have paid out over forty-four million pounds in business grants, and obviously we're looking to, there will be some more funding and announcements in the budget next week. Our coronavirus marshals continue their good work in the community, seven days a week, including helping with the vaccination programme, roll out the trial of symptom-free testing, contact tracing, as well as providing high-visibility advice and reassurance. To support business and the local economy, the pandemic, officers have continued to provide the latest guidance and support for businesses, including signposting to funding opportunities and advice on reopening and operating safely. During the summer, the council ran a promotional campaign with two local business improvement districts to support footfall in our key shopping and tourism locations, while encouraging responsible visitor behaviours. In December, we switched on our new spectacular lighting to decorate those key areas and encourage people to come and see the new magical illuminations for themselves, to back their local traders, shop locally and shop safe. Looking ahead, the council has secured a fifty-metre-tall observation wheel for Great Yarmouth Seafront in order to provide additional Covid-safe draw as part of supporting the important visitor economy for this summer. All of this work has all been delivered at the same time in continuing to pave the way for significant capital investment that will help to facilitate and support continued economic growth within the borough, which is key to our longer-term recovery and regeneration of the area. With our ambitious plans focused around Great Yarmouth Town Centre and Seafront, the councillors continued to invest in some of the borough's significant assets to support and regenerate the area. These and other key projects have been possible due to the council making investments in its assets and also successfully drawing down external funding, either from national funding or locally from the local enterprise partnership and from the business rates. In the town centre, we have secured an offer of thirteen point seven million investment from the government Future High Street Funds towards our vision to transform and revive Great Yarmouth Town Centre as a vibrant economic, cultural and community hub. As part of this work, we'll soon start on the first phase of our new four-point-six marketplace redevelopment. Work has now begun on the new hundred and twenty million pound third river crossing led by Norfolk County Council, which supports our ambitions for the investment and regeneration in the town centre and wider borough, connecting the port area and enterprise zone directly to the A forty-seven, while cutting congestion in and around the town centre. On the seafront, following successful waterways restoration, the council broke ground in January on the new Marina Centre, scheduled for opening in summer twenty twenty-two. The council's twenty-six million investment will be a major boost to the economy and community for decades to come, acting as a catalyst for potential further investment and seafront generation, while supporting health and wellbeing for the whole borough. We are about to submit the next stage for our bid for the National Lottery Heritage Horizon Fund for our project to save, restore and reimagine the Winter Gardens at the heart of Great Yarmouth regeneration and daily life as a year-round visitor attraction that makes the most of this unique building. We've also applied for nearly twenty-five million of government investment known as a town deal to help deliver an exciting sixty million pound vision, supporting economic regeneration, recovery, jobs and growth across the borough's main urban areas. And key projects for that deal are a new learning centre and university campus, co-located within a new town centre library, offering more ways and opportunities for people of all ages to take their learning and job prospects to the next stage. A new eighteen million pound operations and maintenance centre of excellence with business incubator units at South Deans, unlocking and enabling further inward investment by the energy sector. Restoration and sustainable repurpose of a number of historic buildings, including restoration of the Winter Gardens and making it a year-long seafront attraction and restoration and adaptation of the Ice House as a national centre for arts and the circus. Enhancements to the railway station, gateway and north key to improve the accessibility and attractiveness of this key point of entry for commuters and visitors, as well as improved pedestrian and cycle links between the town centre, seafront, along with enhanced digital connectivity. With a focus on attracting further investment, driving economic regeneration and recovery, the ambition is to take our place to the next stage, to reinvent public places, to tap into and grow a thriving arts and cultural scene, to supply new homes, nurture new jobs, businesses and new opportunities to learn and grow, to make our people, visitors and visitors proud. The budget as presented this evening reflects the continued investment and proactive work that the council is undertaking to support the economy and public priorities. This will be available to do to the council's priority operate as effectively and efficiently as possible and identify opportunities to generate additional income and retain growth within the borough. Whilst there are still financial challenges ahead, and at this time we do not know what the outcome of the funding reviews will be from twenty twenty-two, twenty-three onwards, the key themes of our business strategy include regeneration, delivering and facilitating growth, be it in new homes or businesses, and ensuring that we operate in an effective and efficient manager.
Councillor Smith, you have thirty seconds.
I've already got about that left, your worship, will all remain a priority in the median term. To ensure that we are able to plan for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three in a timely manner, work on the future financial planning for the authority will commence early in the new financial year, and will be updated once outcomes of the spending review and fair funding review are announced. In the meantime, I am confident that the budget as presented is achievable and supports the delivery of the corporate plan, and I therefore recommend the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three as detailed, sorry, that should be, twenty-one, twenty-two, as detailed on the agenda page one, four, three, thank you, your worship.
Thank you, can I have a proposal? Second, please, in second by councillor Graham Plant, councillor Plant, you wish to speak?
Can I speak at the end, your worship?
You can reserve your right to speak if you wish.
Thank you.
I have three, four people to speak in a list, so I'm going to take first, obviously, the Shadow Leader, Trevor Winwright. Councillor Trevor Winwright.
Thank you, worship, today we are holding our first-ever remote budget council meeting, held at a time when we can at last see some light at the end of the tunnel, that the pandemic may be coming to an end. I would like to thank Sheila, senior officers and all Great Yarmouth Borough Council staff for the work that they have been carrying out during these unprecedented times. Many staff have been redeployed to different roles, and I know some of these roles have been very challenging to them. Everybody's commitment has been second to none. With the road map out of lockdown being announced yesterday, the time now, more than ever, is to support our local businesses. Government grants have been helpful, but have not covered all losses, and many businesses have had to take on additional debt to survive. The time now is for government, is to compensate all viable businesses for all of the losses that they have incurred and provide additional support to businesses over the next three months and beyond. And I hope in next week's budget, this further support is forthcoming. We owe an enormous debt of gratitude to the scientists for producing a vaccine in record time and our NHS and volunteers for rolling out the vaccination programme so effectively. Had this been left to the private sector, we would certainly not have achieved the number of seventeen point five million vaccinations that we see today. The pandemic has shown the inadequacies of our society after ten years of conservative austerity. Child poverty increasing, food bank usage at an all-time high, life expectancy stalled and the lowest paid most exposed to the virus. Yesterday, the Norfolk County councillors at their annual budget meeting voted against the Labour amendments which have helped fund children's centres, youth services, laptops for disadvantaged young learners, hungry children in Norfolk, adult social care, advice for carers, disability-related expenditure, sheltered housing warden service and established a Covid commemorative fund. With county councillors' elections in May, the electorate had the opportunity to say enough is enough and vote for change. I would now like to thank Karen, Lorna and all of the finance team for producing this budget proof for us today. The last twelve months have put enormous pressure on the team, who have amongst other things have administered and paid out Covid nineteen grants in excess of forty-five million pounds to businesses throughout the borough. The budget is only for one year and has been produced with many unknown Covid nineteen factors. The constraints on Great Yarmouth's budget have increased year on year, with below-average government settlements over the last six years. During that period, our core spending power has decreased by nearly two million pounds, with local council taxpayers being asked to make up the difference. Our core spending power is slightly increased this year, only because we have received a lower-tier services grant of one hundred and sixty-four thousand. Once again, Great Yarmouth is classed as lower than its neighbouring councils. Today, the average band E council tax in Great Yarmouth and Galston urban areas will increase by three point ninety-nine percent to a total of nineteen hundred and twenty-two pounds per annum. But even more, if you live in one of the parishes like Hemsby, who have increased their preset by fifty-five point eight-four percent. Takes a bit getting used to that, fifty-six percent increase on the parish preset, yet they still ask for money for concurrent function grants and they take money from the bid. But we look forward to the review that was delayed this year because of Covid nineteen of the concurrent function grants, paid over to parish council, amounting to one hundred and forty-two thousand pounds. An increase of three point ninety-nine percent, or fifty-seven pounds per year, does not sound a lot, especially to some of our twin-hatted Conservative councillors on allowances in excess of forty thousand pounds plus expenses. But let me tell you that the public sector workers, not subject to local agreements and will now be subject to a pay freeze, this council increase will be yet another nail in the coffin, especially at a time where we are coming out of a pandemic and residents' incomes across the borough have taken unprecedented hit. Although council tax discounts are available for the less well-off, it's the residents who have just enough income and means they don't qualify for benefits. These are the ones who get hammered by council tax increases as a proportion of their income, and this needs to be stopped. It is time that the government started to take local authorities seriously and give councils the funding that they desperately need. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Can I go on, councillor Colleen Walker? I quit doing these in list as I receive them, councillor Walker, Colleen.
Thank you, your worship, I did actually raise this yesterday, and I wish to raise it again today because it fell on deaf ears yesterday. I'm asking you to, or asking the council to revisit the reinstatement of the Warden Service to give everyone who's vulnerable and elderly residents a lifeline. The Warden Service went from weekly visits to a phone call once every two to three weeks. This during one of the worst pandemics in my lifetime, and I can guarantee to say in theirs also. We have approximately nine hundred.
Tony Wright's next. Sorry, keep going, sorry, do apologize, Colleen.
We have approximately nine hundred and forty-five sheltered homes across the borough, and a quarter of those are in my division. A provision primarily for those who want to try to live out their lives as independently as possible. However, most of them do not have dependents to rely on, and their life and mental health have suffered tremendously during this time. These are wonderful people and they come in ages ranging from seventy-five to ninety-plus. When it was possible for wardens to visit them, it was a lifeline and brought a smile to their faces. That smile has now gone and been replaced by the lack of self-worth. And before you bat this request out of water, I'm asking you, please, to remember, this could be any member of your family, as it could mine, and there but for the grace of God go any one of us. I would like to formally request that this goes to the Housing and Neighbourhoods Committee for an in-depth look at the costings to give back this lifeline. You have said you want to look after those who are most vulnerable. The costing, as I found out in seventeen eighteen when it was dispersed with, were eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-two pounds, and a proportion of that was three hundred and fourteen thousand and fifty pounds from Norfolk County Council. You've painted a wonderful picture across our borough about business and about the holiday trade and about the town centre. These people are part of that community and they deserve better. And all I'm asking is that you would please take this back, look at it and at least give it some serious thought. Thank you very much, your worship.
Councillor Colleen Walker, is this a request or a proposal? Is this a request or a amendment? The difference is that we would have to take a vote.
Well, I would like it to go to Housing and Neighbourhoods, so if it has to be a proposal, then so be it.
Well, let's see if councillor, the leader of the council, will you take it to go to Housing and Neighbourhoods? Hello?
Sorry, sorry, your worship, I was on mute, your worship, this obviously has come as a bit of a, I know it was raised, I heard the same speech obviously at county yesterday.
Not quite the same.
Well, almost the same, Colleen, wasn't it, anyway, but anyway, but anyway, so, your worship, I mean, it needs to be costed out properly and I have a problem if she wants, if it wants to go actually to Housing and Neighbourhoods, and it can be discussed there because it will then, and they can discuss it there, and then, but it would have to be brought back to council for a vote on it because obviously, because the amounts involved, but we do need a, if it's going to come back, it needs to be in a proper, a proper form and a proper recommendation from whatever, so thank you.
So can I take it from your words you've just said, that you're happy to let it go as a recommendation to Housing and Neighbourhoods, and the report will come back to full council, are you happy with that?
Yes, your worship, I'm up.
Does anybody wants to object to that? No one's objected.
Can I just say, your worship, that was what I was after, if I didn't word it correctly, then I apologise.
No, it's all right.
Your worship.
You'll never be as perfect as anybody else, you're as perfect as you are.
Your worship, your worship, sorry, I know you're taking it in order, but councillor Scott Greenard has requested to speak, but has also put in the chat that he would like to speak particularly on the request that was just made. So I know he wasn't next on your list, but I don't know if you wanted to follow your list, he is on the list but not next.
I've got a list, sorry, councillor Scott Greenard, and if I allow you to come in, I'll have to allow everybody else to speak when they want. The leader of the council has said he will take it and it will go to Housing and Neighbourhoods to be discussed and we'll have another chance to speak to it then, are you still insisting on speaking?
Your worship, councillor Scott Greenard is on our list to speak, he just wanted to speak particularly on that, so he will have his turn when we go through the list.
Turn, I'm going to get to it, right?
Your worship, can I just bring in a point of order, your worship, please?
Right. Yes.
Your worship, I've agreed to take this to the Housing and Neighbourhoods Committee, and so in other words, really, there shouldn't be no more discussion tonight, this is discussion about the budget setting for tonight.
One hundred percent, that's why I've said, I was just clarifying it for Stephen Scott Greenard. He is on my list to speak, and when I get to him, he can say what he likes in his three minutes. minutes. Right. The next one is councillor Mike Smith-Clyer.
Thank you, your worship. Having listened to Tory councillors saying that everything's smelling of roses throughout yesterday's county council budget meeting, I just couldn't help but wonder whether the same aroma would fill their noses during this evenings. Surely those smelling salts must be working by now and that even they could no longer ignore the striking odor of reality. Maybe it won't be as easy for them to say to Great Yarmouth's residents that fly tipping has been reduced, when their streets, alleys and ditches are littered to overflowing with rubbish, or that they're placing the needs of the most vulnerable first, when as Trevor's pointed out, so many local families are relying on food banks and free meals in order to survive. They might just realise that their spin that they often use can and has been seen through but by that young mum living with damp on her walls, or the gig economy family living in both digital and financial poverty, or the older lady living in a ward where her life expectancy is tragically reduced. Each real life affected by their cuts, their closures and their continued chaotic governance. Now, that's over a decade's worth of misery. Yes, Covid has been horrendous, but then so has this Tory misrule. Crumbs do not make a budgetary feast and the dropping of ever diminishing crumbs from this Tory government's double helpings for some table to county, district and borough councils do not represent a snack, but more a continued famine. Yes, budgets come and go, but rather than more rose smelling, let's look at what's really needed: change. Great Yarmouth deserves that, we all deserve that, we all deserve better. Thank you, your worship.
The monitoring officer would like to speak. So hand over to the monitoring officer.
Thank you, your worship. I was just wanting to clarify whether this is being treated as an amendment or not.
It's not an amendment. The leader of the council has agreed to allow it to go back to housing, right, and neighbourhoods for a full report. Thank you. Right, my next person is councillor Scott Greenard.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I want to point out that any discussion points I was going to raise were meant to be positive and not contentious. So councillor Smith, I can allay your fears in that regard. I want to make some points and I completely hold the life accounts of the Labour group I've obviously presented tonight. I wish to speak independently, as that is my elected position as an independent councillor. I do feel that for this council to have one of the lowest budgets per capita in Norfolk and having set such a high standard of support over the last, well, 18 months, is credit to the officers, to the public and to the volunteers and voluntary organisations. But I just feel that I want to recognise all of the members as well for everything that they've done, because I just believe we have acted collectively and responsibly and it has shown us all that we can do that and act appropriately. I'll say as well, I do, I know it seems like a small amount of money, but for myself, who's not necessarily a member of committees, I welcome the continuation of the ward budget, that money available to myself and in my community has been particularly of such great use to my community with the school, local school, and I welcome that. I commend Karen and her team, the financial team for their budget as presented. But my point was that I wanted to raise, sorry, with regards to the suggestion about taking back the matter to the Housing and Neighbourhoods team is that I just want us all as members to recall and remember that only two meetings ago, we all agreed on the community plan that was put forward and the basis of that was for us to be able to be in a great position as a council to make approaches for grants, you know, beyond this budget. So on that regard, I just think that this fell into that kind of area. It should be, don't get me wrong, I agree with the points about the lack of support from government, we are not the national government, we are a local government and the thing that's available to us is to make use of that community plan and approach for grants, but it needs to be clearly identified. Let's recognise what the councillors on one side are saying, there is a need, but let's all work together to use that community plan and get grants to support that need.
Councillor Scott Greenard, it's already agreed to do it, you know, and.
I'm sorry, worship.
You are talking about that, but well, don't interrupt me, please. I'm more than happy to let you speak, but it's already been agreed by everyone, I assume nobody objected to it, so it is going back and you will have your chance, I believe. As a councillor, you can attend any council meeting that is taken up, you can attend the Housing and Neighbourhoods and I'm sure if you ask the chairman very nicely, he'll let you speak. But I have to say that we've already agreed this matter and I really do, I want to move on if possible, because I do have a list of other speakers.
Your worship.
You have a minute left.
Yeah, your worship, I'd just like to say that I agree with the budget as proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, my next one is councillor Daniel Camden.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I'd just like to match councillor Smith's remarks in the budget and thank all the council officers for all the hard work they have done with this budget. Coming off the back of positive news yesterday about the roadmap out of restrictions and the positive news of the Conservative Norfolk County Council budget, I would like to inject a bit of positivity into this budget. You know, I haven't heard once from the Labour group, you know, the word investment that we have done in this borough. I mean, all I've heard is criticism, no ideas, no action. It's just the same old story. I mean, councillor Smith-Clyer talks about rose smelling, I think he needs to wake up and smell the coffee. I mean, the stuff that we have been doing on top of coping with a pandemic, the town has still been moving forward with investment, with capital projects, with investment coming in from central Conservative government. The vaccine we speak of, yes, it's NHS doing it, but even that was initiated by the Conservative government. So, you know, this constant criticism of Conservative councillors and of other party members is total rubbish, really. So this is a strong Conservative budget for the borough and it's the best budget for Great Yarmouth.
Right, my next speaker is Paul Wells. Sorry, councillor Talbot, stop, stop, I may have jumped my list.
I was just about to say that, I think I was behind a couple of people.
Yes, you are, so councillor Talbot.
Thank you, your worship. It's just one small point in the budget that's a bit of a bugbear to me and that is the rise in the council tax. And I know that isn't just on us, I know that comes from Norfolk County and the Police and Crime Commissioner, but I am surprised to see again that it has risen close to the maximum amount again. We need to be mindful of what the last year has done to many people in our borough and the fact that the seasonal and hospitality trade is not going to be on its feet until June or July and it might not even properly recover this year, meaning a loss of earnings to many residents making these small increases an accumulative problem, because they don't just have to deal with the increases that they're going to be paying in their rent or in their council tax. A lot of other things are going to go up as well and every little thing that goes up, they're not going to see that increase in their incomings. If anything, if we've got seasonal workers who are going to be seeing a loss of hours, they're going to have a loss of earnings and these increases are going to have a more of a knock-on effect on them than it is anybody else. And it concerns me that we should have looked at the human element and not just the financial one when it comes to this increase.
Thank you very much, Carrie Talbot, as councillor, Carrie Talbot. Right, councillor Jade Martin.
Thank you, your worship. I would just like to again highlight the concerns that remain for the people who've been lost and missed during this pandemic. With continuous cuts year upon year to services that are critical within our communities, like the Warden Service that's already been mentioned, Surestart Centres that have now gone and many other wonderful community projects now lost, which for many was a lifeline and great relationships that had been built. It was very disappointing to hear during the county budget yesterday, the repetitive sound of business, business focus. And while yes, let's invest in businesses and growth, we can't forget to invest in the people also. So there's your investment, councillor Camden. Let's invest in people, invest in local companies for projects, more social rent homes, which are needed more than ever, and make sure affordable housing is actually affordable. But where's the focus on the vulnerable people who need our support? We've had funding from the government, which has been discussed, but this town has been held up during this very difficult time by its amazing community spirit. So much has been achieved through volunteers and people given so generously when themselves have had so little to give. Food banks are being used like never before and not just to top up their larders, as one Tory councillor would have you believe. But now they're a lifeline to many from all backgrounds and those working are still struggling to get by. Things are only set to get tougher. So it's only right that the services that support people are properly funded. This is relative because we have county and borough councillors here who know how much people in Great Yarmouth have been struggling, yet there was little fight for them yesterday, they were let down. I know people will point out that the cuts to the Surestart Centres was over two years ago now, but once we reach that light at the end of the tunnel, which is thankfully coming, and emergency funding stops, we will need these services more than ever to make our community stronger and to support those who find it difficult or unable to ask for help. How reassuring it would have been had they already been there, ready and waiting to welcome everyone. A positive note, I do want to express thanks to the amazing officers whose policy work I know will bring great change and hope to this town. For me, it was the focus on tackling homelessness, something that this pandemic has shown can be achievable if and when it's seen as a priority. There really is so many exciting projects and plans for Great Yarmouth to come and this is down to the brilliant work and vision of our officers who are continuing to power on despite the challenges that we are facing. So a massive thank you to you and thanks to all the workers at Great Yarmouth Council who have continued to adapt and take on new roles like never before. But my heartfelt thanks must go to the amazing people of Great Yarmouth who have really come together during this challenging time.
Councillor Jade Martin, you've got 30 seconds.
Okay. Who've really come together during this challenging time, who've helped everybody they possibly could, people they've never met before. And whether it may have been taking the time to listen to those who are struggling, donating, collecting, delivering whatever was needed, nothing was too much of an ask for them. We are so lucky to have the most kindest and generous people in our community. We must go, we must get, we will get through this together, sorry, and we must make sure to not go backwards when all this ends and this must mean investing in people. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, my next one is councillor Paul Wells.
Thank you, worship. Just to check, I do think councillor White put his name up before me, hand up before me.
Well, I'm ever so sorry, but on my list, I've got you next.
But if you want to argue, I'm more than happy to change it if you want to let somebody else in front of you. No, I'm quite happy to speak now, I just wanted to.
There you are, thank you, Paul.
I just find this all rather bizarre, because we have a situation where we're seeing some fantastic, very powerful rhetoric being deployed by the Labour Party, but with the notable exception of councillor Walker, nothing actually on the table. It's all, you can cheer, you can portray and talk about a dystopia all you wish and I don't recognise this dystopia of Great Yarmouth. I don't believe we live in this Victorian hellscape, which is betrayed by the Labour Party. And I don't believe you believe that too, because if you did, you would have actual proposals on the table of how you're going to ameliate and change this Tory ravaging which is taking place. The facts of the matter is, this meeting has shown already through the debate, that there is one option, which is the Conservative budget, which is being a good one by many speakers, which will support many members of our community and will also invest and ensure that our town, our town and borough rather, continues to move forward and continues to get the investment which it requires so that as a community, Yarmouth can get even better. As I said, I think it's quite simple, we have one, we have one choice, which is a budget of Conservative ideas and I would say Labour amendments, but there aren't any Labour amendments. So we have a choice of something or nothing, words or action, and I think I know which way it has to go, action, time and time again. And I just think it's disappointing that Labour play, talk a good game and then deliver absolutely nothing for their residents.
Thank you. Right, councillor Tony Wright.
Thanks very much, your worship. Obviously, following councillor Wells gives me a little bit of ammunition there, because I think what councillor Wells forgets is that people who have been in the town a lot longer understand some of the tragic circumstances surrounding the election of a Conservative government in 2010. And whilst he's critical of the fact that we haven't put any amendments forward, the problem is, in Great Yarmouth, we've got very little movement for amendments because of the tragic budget settlements that we've had over a number of years from the Conservative administration. And that is one of the reasons why our hands are tied because of national government policy. Yes, we do get these grants and we've had a number of grants towards specific projects, but the problem is, there's an underlying trend in Great Yarmouth where people are living in poverty and this has gone on for years. I don't say it's been a new thing, but it's gone on for years. And the problem is, over the last 12 months, we've been at the centre of this pandemic and it's very easy for us to be critical of particular budget headings, but I think the most important thing to understand is that what we want to do is to try to support the people within the community, the residents. And yes, we are looking to come out of this pandemic very soon, but I think we're going to pay the price of this in the next 12, 18 months, two years perhaps, and that's when we'll see where it's going to hit Yarmouth very, very badly. And I think one of the things that we need to be looking at over the next 12 months is to look forward in terms of trying to resolve the situation by attempting to get a government to invest more in the people at the grassroots level. I mean, it's okay, you know, I mean, I know, you know, some councillors are on £1,000 a week, but I could represent people on the estates who are struggling, struggling every single day of the week. I myself, as a number of other councillors and other officers do, go out and deliver food parcels to people every single week. I myself and my wife deliver over 20 parcels a week and now that is going to be ongoing, that is unprecedented. That seems to be a badge of honour for the Conservatives. It's not a badge of honour for us in the Labour Party, we want to represent the people. Our hands are tied and it would be futile for us to actually put forward any resolutions which wouldn't mean anything except for words. We want to work with the controlling party, as we've seen and has been evident over the last 12, 18 months. And what we've said quite clearly, that we will support the projects, but don't expect us to sit back and just accept the fait accompli that we're faced with from the Conservative government. We've had significant cuts, the biggest cuts in local authorities in the region, that's what Great Yarmouth faces. And I think if Mr Wells had been there a lot longer, he would have understood the history of this, when we had unemployment in the Thatcher years of one in five people in Great Yarmouth. And I fear after this pandemic, this is going to be a situation that we may well face up to. Hopefully, that we're not going to get to that stage, but we've got to work together to try to achieve something better for the people of Great Yarmouth. And I think as far as the communities are concerned, they rely on us to give them support. So forgive us if we're not putting any resolutions forward for amendments, because there's no room for manoeuvre and there's no room for manoeuvre because we haven't been given the money. And there's no room for manoeuvre because we haven't been given the money to provide the services that we believe are necessary for the people of Great Yarmouth. So as far as that is concerned, I think one of the questions that I would want to pose, your worship, if I may, as far as the budget is concerned, this goes down to community.
Councillor Wright, you've got thirty seconds.
I think just in terms of the community centres, I've noticed within the budget that once again, community centres have been cut back again. And bearing in mind, of course, that we need to give the support within the community, and they do form the best in many communities. I just wonder whether the chairman of the Housing and Neighbours Committee could comment on the cuts once again to the community centres. There may be a simple solution to this, a simple answer, but I would like to know what the answer is. Thank you.
Right, councillor Bernard Williamson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes. May I just first of all concur with other councillors by thanking the officers for producing this budget in a very straight time, we had a spare time. We must remember that the backdrop to this, and if councillor Wells could look back a few years, the backdrop to this is there were 50% cuts to core funding the Yarmouth Council. We came, we took control in 2012, had to deal with an immediate cut of millions of pounds. The council has dealt with that quite successfully, but we've come down to a budget which really, as councillor Wright has said, there's very little manoeuvre in it, there's so little manoeuvre in this budget, very, very tight. But what worries me is the backdrop to this budget. The budget, yes, it stacks up, it adds up, it's what we can do in Great Yarmouth. But the backdrop is one of really an austerity which has bitten very deeply into our community. When councillor Smith talks glibly in the budget of 30,000 pounds being put towards food banks, that is a disgrace, that we can admit that, that we'll accept that food banks, banks are acceptable. When I was in America, in New York a few years ago, we walked past the food bank at a church. We were astounded. And yet today, we see them increasing every month, every day. And this has fooled good people who are earning wages, who have got universal credit, earning wages, and they're still struggling. So it's that whole lack, that backdrop to society which is missing. Yes, this budget stacks up, yes, it's one we have to do, I agree with that. You have to take account of the fact that the Conservative Party has sat back with 6.5 billion pounds, for example, was cut from social care by George Osborne, the first action he took when he came to power. That's left social care in a terrible state. And at the moment, the government hasn't plugged those gaps. So we're dealing with a budget with this big backdrop. We've got over 200 to 400,000 people in destitution, not poverty, destitution in the UK. That's the stage below poverty when you're completely down and out. Now, if we're going to accept this is all well, and if poor councillor Wells and councillor Camden thinks this is wonderful, this is action, then fine. When we move on to the things we are doing, spending grants, yes, we've got the grants, the High Street Fund, the High Street Fund and the town deal, but they only went, the majority of those went to Conservative.
Councillor Williamson, you've got thirty seconds. Thank you.
Equally across the piece, across all councils, what I would like to see is a complete investment in local government by this, in local government, by this Tory government. That's what we need to provide services. It's been demonstrated locally, the way we've worked in the Covid operation, how local government is desperately needed. The backdrop is the one to look at, not this mini budget. Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Brian Walker.
Thank you, your worship. I'm not really going to speak on the budget, but I realise that all councillors can't be as good looking as me and have my charisma. But do you think when they're speaking, we could possibly see them on the screen? Thank you.
Right, thank you. Well, it would be polite, I would agree with you, but they choose not to turn the screens on, it's entirely up to them.
Your worship, I can confirm, everybody has got their cameras on, but for some reason this evening it isn't showing this pictures properly. So everybody has got their cameras on, I can confirm that. It's just for some reason the showing isn't showing everybody's pictures, so they have, everybody has got their cameras on, it's not that people have got cameras off. It's just the system this evening, your worship, sorry.
Can I correct my thing? And because there are at least five people on my monitor that aren't on camera, well, five, six, seven, eight. The only one that's showing is myself. Right. Can we move on? Is there anybody else wishes to speak that hasn't spoken? Right, councillor Coda Achenbach.
Thank you, your worship. Sorry, it wouldn't unmute. As others have said, I'd also like to thank the officers for the report that they've put forward and to acknowledge what's been said, we can't change much of it because the limitations are set from far above where we are. As an opposition though, it is our duty to point out the challenges and the reality of the situation and not allow things just to be glossed over with a few highlights. When you look at the risks detailed in the budget, we are still left with constant unknowns and more dither and delay from the Conservative administrations above in government. You look at the risks, the future funding, again, this budget has had to be based on a one-year settlement because of further delays to the implementation of the new funding system, and we wait to see what that will mean for us. The new homes bonus, again, we're waiting on the consultation for that. And the current scheme that we have is heavily skewed against authorities like ours. When we've got the local council tax support, we are waiting. It's great that we have that to support households on low income and those in receipt of benefits. But again, we're waiting to see what happens with the furlough scheme. We're waiting to see what happens with the self-employed scheme, until with so many unknowns that we are having to work, that actually what can we offer, because what's coming down to us gives us no room to play. I'd like to thank the officers for doing everything they can in such a difficult and dire backdrop.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken, wishes to speak? Right, and this is the last one, I am going to call in councillor Plant. But just to let you know, I'm going to say something at the end of councillor Plant's speech. Oh, right, thank you, councillor Plant.
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to respond to a couple of things I heard during those speeches. One is councillor Tony Wright, who seems to think that Conservative councillors think it's a badge of honour to look at people who are struggling. I can assure you that we are working as hard as anybody else to make sure that anybody who's struggling gets the help they deserve. And I completely think that is a wrong thing to say, I hope he takes it back. I'd just like to add a little bit to this as well, and that is, we have to skill up our people once this pandemic is over. We have ONM operations and maintenance base we need to look at, we have offshore wind. We have several other businesses that are moving into the town and we need to upskill our people. So there are plenty of schemes out there, recruit, retrain, reward programmes, providing a financial incentive to an SME, smaller, medium sized enterprise, to take on a new apprentice aged 16 to 24, or re-employ one made redundant due to Covid. There's the employer training incentive project, a grant scheme to help SMEs in sectors most affected by Covid-19. It provides people with the skills they need to support the survival, diversification and growth of the business they work for, as well as their own personal development. And for those people who are furthest from the job market, there's a £5 million chances programme seeks to help 2,600 of them back into employment, and this is locally, already being developed before the pandemic. But what, rather than going to the negatives of what this budget is about, I'd like to turn to the capital bids programme that is in the agenda on appendix G. And on top of all the investments that the leader talked about in his speech, what we're also doing is applying for mobile CCTVs so that we can look for the people who are doing this fly tipping that councillor Smith-Clare claims is happening so much. But at least if we get mobile CCTV, we'll be able to catch them. Replacement of vehicles used by the Environment, Health Events, car parking and property. We're going to be the Wellesley Recreation Brands. We're looking at making sure that that can be used by the people of the borough. This isn't a holiday or a tourism element. This is for the people of the borough. External redecorations and repair of the Wellesley Grandstand. Phoenixville Pool Car Park, Sukaway, refurbish the tower toilets, including changing places and facilities. We're also looking at the town centre CCTV, the crematorium, re-roofing to the main chapel. That's not for, that's not for holidaymakers, that is for local, and a noise. Thank you very much. And I think the point I'd be making is, yes, we do care about the people of Great Yarmouth. We are working so hard to make sure that they have investments happening that can help them get a job in the future. And we are going to make sure that if they do, there are jobs in the future, we're going to make sure that they're skilled enough to take them on. And so there's a lot of things going on in the background that this budget doesn't show. But the officers are involved in that as well. So on top of working through a pandemic and doing two jobs, as well as getting all the investment they've got for Great Yarmouth, they're also doing the skills as well. Thank you, worship.
Right, I did say, before we take the vote, I would like to say something. Can I, can I say that I would like to personally thank all of the staff, from the chief executive down to the, to the cleaner at the bottom of the row. You know, all these people have put real effort, and I mean real effort, into this pandemic. And the same goes for all of the councillors. I've seen councillors do amazing things in this pandemic. And let's, I know the budget is controversial and the budget always has, and I recall a budget going on till half past three in the morning. But, you know, in the end, we're all here to help the people of Great Yarmouth. And we're not here to bicker amongst ourselves. So let's work together to make Great Yarmouth great. Thank you. Right, we'll move to the vote.
Sorry, I just had to make sure this was shown in the main screen, your worship. Councillor Anderson.
Four.
Councillor Bensley.
Four.
Councillor Bird.
Four.
Councillor Borg. Councillor Borg.
Sorry, I was muted. Abstain.
Councillor Cameron.
Four.
Councillor Camden.
Four.
Councillor Graham Carpenter.
Four.
Councillor Penny Carpenter.
Four.
Councillor Cordina Achenbach.
Abstain.
Councillor Fairhead.
Abstain.
Councillor Flaxman-Taylor. Four. Councillor Freeman.
Four.
Councillor Gayler.
Four.
Councillor Grant.
Four.
Councillor Hayken.
Four.
Councillor Donna Hammond.
Four.
Councillor Paul Hammond.
Four.
Councillor Geel.
Abstain, as a mayor.
Councillor Lorne.
Four.
Councillor Martin.
Abstain.
Councillor Mockford.
Four.
Councillor Plant.
Four.
Councillor Robinson-Payne.
Abstain.
Councillor Scott Reynard.
Four.
Councillor Smith.
Four.
Councillor Smith-Clare.
Councillor Smith-Clare.
Abstain.
Councillor Stenhouse.
Councillor Stenhouse.
Four.
Councillor Talbot.
Abstain.
Councillor Thompson.
Four.
Councillor Wainwright.
Abstain.
Councillor Bee Walker.
Abstain.
Councillor Seawalker.
Abstain.
Councillor Waters-Bunn.
Abstain.
Councillor Wells.
Four.
Councillor Williamson.
Abstain.
Councillor Bee Wright.
Abstain.
And councillor Tea Wright.
Abstain.
Thank you for just there with me, your worship.
I'm just counting the vote.
So, your worship, I can confirm that it was 22 for the recommendations and 15 abstentions, therefore the recommendations are carried.
The recommendation is carried. Move on to item 17, council tax setting. Councillors are reminded once again that in line with the council's constitution, Councillor Procedure Rule 31.15.6, a recorded vote shall be taken on the setting of the budget. The report is attached on pages 195 to 206. The finance director to present.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening. So ahead of setting the council tax each year, members are required to receive a report from the Chief Financial Officer on the robustness of the estimates made for the purpose of the calculations for council tax and also along with the adequacy of reserves for the council. In respect of the robustness of estimates, the report provides details of the process carried out in producing the budget for the financial year which is presented for approval. It highlights the number of more significant financial risks that continue to face the authority, including income from demand-led services and also the risks around the impact of Covid on the financial position for the authority. In order to mitigate the risks, the estimates have been put together within a robust framework, taking into account past and current performance, along with the challenges of putting together a budget during the pandemic. The budget for 2122 has been informed by the in-year monitoring reports and also in response to other spending pressures, including Covid. In relation to the reserves, the report provides a commentary on the adequacy of the reserves held by the council, including both earmarked and general reserve. The policy framework for reserves outlines the process for determining the minimum level of general reserve, which considers factors, which considers a number of factors, including the, and which results in the recommended minimum level of the general reserve being in the range of 3 million. In conclusion, it is my opinion as the Chief Financial Officer that there is sufficient contingency within the general and also earmarked reserves and that they remain adequate in the short to medium term. After considering the report, you're then, you're now required to undertake the council tax calculations for 2122, which is set out in section four of the report, which start on page 199 through to page 201, along with appendices B to D on pages 204 to 206. The calculation reflects the precepts that have been issued to the council as a billing authority on behalf of the parishes, the officer of the Police and Crime Commissioner and Norfolk County Council to revise the council tax determination, which has been made at appendix D on page 206 of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I call on the leader, councillor Carl Smith, to propose?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Members will see that the proposals or recommendations are on page 195. And it is recommended that having approved the budget for 2122 in detail in the earlier agenda item and consider the chief officers, chief financial officers' report on the robustness of the estimates and the adequacy of reserves, members resolved to undertake the council tax and statutory calculations are set out in section four of the report and set the council tax for 2122, approve the demand on the collection fund for 2021B, A, £4,865,925 for the Borough Council purposes, and B, £519,506 for parish precepts. And I still move that report. Thank you, your worship.
It's been moved. Can I have a second, please? It's seconded by councillor Graham Plant. Do I have any debate on this? I'll wait. Any debate? Right, we'll move to the vote.
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Anderson.
Four.
Councillor Bensley.
Four.
Councillor Bird.
Four.
Councillor Borg.
Four.
Councillor Cameron.
Four.
Councillor Camden.
Four.
Councillor Graham Carpenter.
Four.
Councillor Penny Carpenter.
Four.
Councillor Cordina Achenbach.
Four.
Councillor Fairhead.
Four.
Councillor Flaxman-Taylor.
Four.
Councillor Freeman.
Four.
Councillor Gayler.
Four.
Councillor Grant.
Four.
Councillor Hayken.
Four.
Councillor Donna Hammond.
Four.
Councillor Paul Hammond.
Four.
Councillor Geel.
Abstain.
Councillor Lorne.
Four.
Four.
Councillor Martin.
Four.
Councillor Mogford.
Four.
Councillor Plant.
Four.
Councillor Robinson-Payne.
Four.
Councillor Scott Greenard.
Four.
Councillor Smith.
Four.
Councillor Smith-Clare.
Four.
Councillor Stenhouse.
Four.
Councillor Talbot.
Four.
Councillor Thompson.
Four.
Councillor Wainwright.
Four.
Councillor Bee Walker. Councillor Bee Walker.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Four.
Thank you. Councillor Colleen Walker.
Four.
Councillor Waters-Bunn.
Four.
Councillor Wells.
Four.
Councillor Williamson.
Four.
Councillor Barbara Wright.
Four.
And councillor Tony Wright.
Four.
Thank you, your worship. I can confirm that was 36 votes for and one abstention. So therefore the recommendations are carried. Thank you.
It's carried. Right, right, we're on item 18, any other business, as wish. I have not been notified of any other business. Now we're moving to item.
Your worship, can I just come in on any other business on something very quickly? Your worship, can I just, I'd like to thank Sammy Wintle tonight for what she's done tonight. I think she's done an absolutely fantastic job with the voting and that. I know we tried beforehand to do the recorded vote, but I'd like to thank her for all the hard work. I know she met up with the two groups and the independents as well. So thanks, Sammy. And also, your worship, can I thank you for the way you've conducted the meeting as well tonight? A really professional job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. And I know she's got a big smile on her face.
I wish I was there in that seat.
Yeah, well, I am fortunately. Right, there's no other, any other business. So we're now move to item 19, which is exclusion of the public. Now, before we do this, can I ask if anybody wishes to speak on the green papers?
Yes, I do, your worship.
Right, 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 Tony Wright, councillor Tony, right. Can I ask members to agree to the following resolution? That under section 100A4 of the Local Government Act 1972, the public be excluded from the meeting for the following items of business on the grounds that it involves the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of the schedule of 12A for said act. Can I have an agreement there? Proposer?
I propose that, your worship.
Being proposed, seconded.
Yeah, I'll second that, your worship.
I assume that there's no one wishes to vote against it, so we'll take it as agreed.
So, your worship, we will need to end this meeting, end the live stream and move on to the confidential teams meeting that I've sent you all.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. See you in a minute.